A minute. Okay, Madam Clerk tells me she's ready, and so I would like to call the September sixteen, twenty twenty five regular meeting of the Kenai Peninsula Borough Assembly to order. This meeting is also being conducted through the Zoom meeting platform and can be heard on KDLF FM ninety one point nine, KBBI eight AM eight ninety, and KIBH FM ninety one point seven. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. We now will receive an invocation offered by CES Chaplain Frank Alioto. You may either remain standing or be seated. No one is required to participate.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come before you today with grateful hearts, acknowledging your wisdom and sovereignty in all things. Your word reminds us that even as darkness may linger, in due time your light will shine. Teach us to wait with patience and to walk in faith, knowing that your justice will prevail. As we gather in this assembly, guide our thoughts, words, and our decisions. Help us to pursue what is right, to act with integrity, and to seek the good of all. When challenges arise and the way forward seems unclear, strengthen our trust in your promises. Lord, grant us courage to stand firm for justice, humility to listen with open hearts, and perseverance to keep moving forward in hope. May what we do here today bring honor to you and reflect your righteousness. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Chaplain Alioto. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
President Ribbons?
Here.
Vice President Cooper?
Here.
James Basden is excused. Mr. Cox?
Here.
Willie Dunn? I haven't marked as Zoom, but, Mr. President, I do not see him logged on. Ms. Eklund?
Here.
Leslie Morton? I also have her noted as Zoom, but I do not see her online as well. Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Tunsit?
Here.
You have a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So, we has met this afternoon for a number of committee reports, and the first committee report at thirteen thirty was Committee of the Whole, and so for that reason I get to give a committee report. And this was for Ordinance twenty twenty five dash twenty one. It was a working session for us to have an opportunity to hear in some greater detail about some of the proposed changes that are in this ordinance. And this ordinance will become before us again ten fourteen twenty five for the hearing. And briefly, what this ordinance does is reorganizes section five point twelve of Borough Code into four smaller subject-focused areas. The intent is to improve readability and navigation. What happened to that one is it just over the years had accrued more and more modifications and changes to it, to the point where it was a little difficult to understand. And specifically what this addresses is assessment role, true value determinations, real property, personal property, exemptions, taxes, tax appeals, and the Board of Equalization. So, we had a very nicely presented analysis of what the changes would be provided for us by Director Wilcox and Sean Kelly. And following that, we have the Finance Committee brought to us by, oh, excuse me, sorry, we even talked about this in advance, and I totally forgot about it. Assemblymember Cox?
Yes, I just wanted to add to that, and I was told this was the appropriate place, that I would like to be added as a sponsor or cosponsor of that ordinance, because I've been, we've been asking for this since I've been on the assembly, and I'm glad under this administration that we're able to do this. So, I think it's something that the public will appreciate, and having it be a little bit more of an organized fashion in that you can find things easily. And it's just, the, the way that it's been put together is a lot more clear, and I think there'll be a lot less questions from the public, which is kind of what we're looking for. So, thank you.
Thank you, Assemblymember Cox. Okay, so, moving right along, our next committee was the Finance Committee. Chair Tunsit.
Thank you, President Ribbons. The Finance Committee met at three o'clock this afternoon until three thirty, when we adjourned. There were three items under public hearing on ordinances, and then we had three ordinances for introduction under New Business, and so I'll just kind of go through those all here briefly. The first was Ordinance twenty twenty five dash nineteen dash ten. This is accepting and approving appropriating grant funds of eighteen thousand two hundred to the Kenai Peninsula Borough for the River Center Access and Restoration Demonstration Project. This is eighteen thousand two hundred dollars. It's coming from the National Fish Habitat Partnership Grant. You'll see also that there's an amendment that adjusts the number slightly from eighteen thousand two hundred to eighteen thousand seven hundred and ten to reflect the actual cost. And what this project is really is, is the ability for the River Center to be able to create, like, demos of elevated light penetrating walkways, that sort of thing. So, when they have people out there discussing projects and how they want to go about it, that they can actually show people the materials, what it looks like, how to build it, what to use, that sort of thing. The next is Ordinance twenty twenty five dash nineteen dash eleven. This is accepting and appropriating grant funds for the purchase of three slip-on tanker units. This was brought to us by the mayor, and so what this is, is basically three slip-on tanker units that will go retrofit on existing vehicles that Western Emergency Service Area already has, and allow them to have, you know, greater firefighting capability specific to wildland fire risks as well, where this grant money comes from the Department of Interior, Office of Wildland Fire. And so, that grant was ninety-eight thousand eight hundred and forty-four, and what this does is request an additional one percent for the administration service fees of nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Also note that this was approved unanimously at the Western Emergency Service Area Board on the second of this month. The, the next one is Ordinance twenty twenty five dash nineteen dash twelve, appropriating funds from the Insurance and Litigation Fund balance for additional insurance premium and claims reserve. We had an executive session held on this one as well, where we had discussed a few specific claims. I won't get into that detail, but in a nutshell, what this, this is requesting is six hundred and ninety-five thousand two hundred and ninety-five dollars that would be appropriated to the Insurance and Litigation Fund balance for primarily two reasons. The expectation of additional claims needed and to be in reserve, and then also we had a pretty significant increase to our vehicle insurance. So, when we went from APRA or ARPA, APRA, I guess that's the Public Risk Pool to the AML Joint Insurance Pool, there was some, some increases. We've enjoyed some decreases on some other areas in, in insurance, but for the vehicle premiums, there was an increase. And so, that's what this six hundred and ninety-five thousand two hundred and ninety-five dollars is for, is for the additional insurance premium and claims reserve. And then we had a few items under New Business. So, the first was Ordinance twenty twenty four dash nineteen dash forty-two, deobligating some or all in-kind services by the City of Saldovia and the City of Seward, and appropriating their cash contributions as required match funds for the Safe Streets and Roads for All Grant Project. This, this is retroactive, and essentially, the cities of Seward and the City of Saldovia didn't meet all of their in-kind obligations for the grant, and so they're providing cash in lieu of that to meet the grant requirements. And so, what that amounted to was seven hundred and thirty-five dollars from the City of Saldovia and seven thousand two hundred and eighty-two dollars from the City of Seward. The next was Ordinance twenty twenty five dash nineteen dash thirteen. This is accepting and appropriating remaining unspent federal pass-through grant funds from the State of Alaska for woody fuel disposal, and authorizing the mayor to enter into a new memorandum agreement. This primaries for Hope and Cooper Landing. This is a federal grant through the Division of Forestry, Department of Natural Resources, that was primarily put through for woody debris and fuels collection in areas like this. And so, the dates on the original had sort of ran out, and so there was roughly forty-two thousand six hundred and eighty-five dollars of remaining unspent money that would be authorized, and then this authorizes the mayor to enter into a new MOA with the Division of Forestry at, at their request, because the old date had finished. And so, that's what twenty twenty five dash nineteen dash thirteen does. And then finally, we had Ordinance twenty twenty five dash nineteen dash fourteen. This is appropriating U.S. Treasury Local Assistance and Tribal Consistency Funds to support the Central Peninsula Landfill Infrastructure Capital Improvements Project. So, if you guys remember, there was a U.S. Treasury grant. This was through ARPA funds. That was roughly twelve million dollars awarded to the borough, and so this would request one point seven million of those grant funds to be eligible expenses under the land, landfill improvement. And what this money would be used for is, is one point two million dollars for the new compactor for the landfill, and then roughly four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the removal of the old baler, which we also heard from, from the mayor, Mr. Hedges. The new baler has been purchased, a new used baler that we're going to be able to put to use. And so, the, the remaining four hundred and fifty thousand of this is to remove the old baler, and then also design how to best use the existing baler building. So, that's Ordinance twenty twenty five dash nineteen dash fourteen. We concluded our meeting at three thirty, and that concludes the Finance Committee report.
Thank you, Chair Tunsit. Our next committee meeting was the Lands, brought to us by Chair Eklund.
Thank you, President Ribbons. We met at four fifteen for the Lands Committee. We had one agenda item under New Business, the Ordinance for Introduction, Ordinance twenty twenty five dash twenty-two, authorizing the sale of certain parcels which do, do not sell in the twenty twenty five online-only auction, to be offered through an over-the-counter sale following the online auction only. This ordinance was brought to us by Assemblymember Basden, and the hearing would, would be on the fourteenth of October. Mr. Basden was not here today to answer any questions we might have had, and I will be pulling it from the consent agenda item later.
Thank you. And our final committee meeting was Policies and Procedures, brought to us by Chair Cox. Chair Cox?
Thank you. Policies and Procedures started at four thirty. We did ask, the mayor said that he would do his report this evening. We asked if there was any questions from the assembly. There were no specific questions to any of the items on there, or any other specific questions that, that weren't within ordinance at that time. Then we went on to public hearings on ordinances. We have Ordinance twenty twenty five dash one eight, amending Borough Code, KPB one four point zero six point two four zero, and KPB one four point zero six point two five zero regarding decertification. This was brought to us by the mayor. I will give the report on its place on the agenda, as this is not eligible for consent. The next item is also not eligible for consent, and it's Ordinance twenty twenty five dash two zero, amending KPB twenty-one point one eight point zero two five, to address adoptions and deletions of andromous, dromous waters within the West District of the KPB twenty-one point one eight appendix. This is brought to us by the mayor and Assemblymember Johnson. And then we had New Business. We had Resolutions, Resolution twenty twenty five dash zero three eight, authorizing the mayor to execute agreements with the State of Alaska for E nine one one dispatch services in Southeast Alaska, and to execute new memoranda of agreement with entities utilizing dispatch services in the region. And this was brought to us by the mayor, and what this is, is there were temporary services for, for our dispatch to take care of Southeast for the summer, so it was May first through October. And it is now being asked that we do this permanently, so that would bring up the reason for this agreement, and to allow the mayor to have that autonomy to put that together. Ordinances for Introduction. We have Ordinance twenty twenty five dash twenty-three, amending Borough Code, KPB twenty-two point three zero point one one zero regarding assembly compensation to take effect in fiscal year twenty twenty-seven, brought to us by President Ribbons. Hearing would be on ten fourteen twenty-five. And what this would do is very simply, it would change the assembly for a monthly stipend amount from four hundred to five hundred fifty, and the president from five hundred to six hundred and fifty, increasing both of the positions one hundred and fifty dollars per month. The next item is, under Other, we have KPB seven one eight zero, approval of the precinct boards, canvas board, and absentee voting officials for the October seventh, twenty twenty-five regular municipal election. This was brought to us by Clerk Turner, and she had informed us that this is, talking about, this is the list of election workers, and she had mentioned that some of the larger precincts look as if they have more people, because there are more people listed, but it's because they're doing shifts, which means there are more people, but the amount of hours are still the same for, for those people working. It's just we're splitting it up, so not everyone has as many hours. She also did mention that we are fully staffed, as that was a question from the assembly, and all precincts are fully staffed. Next, we have KPB seven one eight one, confirming appointments to the Advisory Planning Commission. We have several in Cooper Landing. We have Philip J. Miller for seat A, Chris DeGernis for seat B, David W. Nice for seat G, and these all expire on nine thirty of twenty twenty-eight. And then for Hope Sunrise area, we have Gregory Sorensen, seat C, and that also expires on September thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight. And then the last item is KPB seven one eight two, confirming appointment to the Road Service Area Board. The applicant was Heidi Covey. This is for at-large seat number one, and the term expires nine thirty, twenty twenty-eight, and that is the end of my report.
Thank you, Chair Cox. That moves us on to the point for establishing our agenda. Are there any amendments to the agenda and the consent agenda, Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. President. Ordinance twenty twenty five nineteen eleven, ordinance twenty twenty five eighteen, and twenty twenty five twenty were all amended to include the Advisory Board recommendations pursuant to KPB twenty-two forty oh five oh F. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any other changes to the agenda or the consent agenda? Chair Tunsit.
Thank you, President Ribbons. I would move to add Ordinance twenty twenty five dash nineteen dash ten to the consent agenda and request unanimous.
Unanimous has been requested. Is there any objection? Hearing and seeing none. I believe there is an amendment to that ordinance as well. Is that not so?
That is correct, Mr. Ribbons. I would move to amend Ordinance twenty twenty five dash nineteen dash ten. Section four is follows, that match funds in the amount of eighteen thousand seven hundred and ten dollars have been previously appropriated to River Center Department Accounts one hundred dot two one one three five dot four during the fiscal year twenty-six annual budgetary process, and are available to match the program, and request unanimous.
Unanimous has been requested. Are there any objections? Hearing, seeing none. It has been amended. Any other changes?
I do, thank you, President Ribbons. I would move to add Ordinance twenty twenty five dash nineteen dash eleven to the consent agenda and would request unanimous.
Unanimous has been requested. Are there any objections? Hearing and seeing none. Are there any other changes, Chair Tunsit?
There are. Thank you, President Ribbons. I would move to add Ordinance twenty twenty five dash nineteen dash twelve to the consent agenda and would request unanimous.
Unanimous has been requested. Are there any objections? Hearing and seeing none. Any other amendments to the agenda? Oh.
Last one, President Ribbons. I would move to amend Ordinance twenty twenty five dash nineteen dash twelve. I meant section two of the ordinance is follows, that funds in the amount of eight hundred and seventy thousand two hundred and ninety-five dollars are appropriated from the Insurance and Litigation Fund fund balance to account number seven hundred dot one one two three seven dot four three nine 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 for additional insurance premiums and claims reserves, and would request unanimous.
Unanimous has been requested. Are there any objections? Hearing and seeing none. It is amended as requested, and I am so fortunate to have Vice President Cooper to keep me from making any mistakes. Any other changes? Chair, Chair Eklund?
Thank you, President Ribbons. I'd like to pull Ordinance twenty twenty five dash twenty-two, authorizing the sale of certain parcels which do not sell in the twenty twenty five online-only auction, to be offered through an over-the-counter sale following the online-only auction. Pull it completely from the agenda, because the sponsor, Assemblymember Basden, was not here tonight to respond to questions.
Thank you. Ordinance twenty twenty five dash twenty-two is removed from the agenda. I believe that's all the changes to the agenda and the consent agenda. In a moment, the clerk will read the titles of the items that are on the consent agenda. After she reads them, you will have an opportunity to testify about them. All items that stay on the consent agenda will be approved or set for public hearing, whichever is the case, when the assembly approves the agenda and the consent agenda. Madam Clerk, please read the consent agenda.
September second, twenty twenty five, regular assembly meeting minutes. Ordinance twenty twenty five nineteen ten, as amended, accepting and appropriating grant funds of eighteen thousand two hundred dollars to the Kenai Peninsula Borough for the River Center Access and Restoration Demonstration Project, sponsored by the mayor. Ordinance twenty twenty five nineteen eleven, accepting and appropriating grant and funds for the purchase of three slip-on tanker units, sponsored by the mayor. Ordinance twenty twenty five nineteen twelve, as amended, appropriating funds from the Insurance and Litigation Fund balance for additional insurance premiums and claim reserves, sponsored by the mayor. Resolution twenty twenty five zero three eight, authorizing the mayor to execute agreements with the State of Alaska for E nine one one dispatch services in Southeast Alaska, and to execute new memoranda of agreement with entities utilizing dispatch services in the region, sponsored by the mayor. Ordinance twenty twenty four nineteen forty-two, deobligating some or all in-kind services by the City of Saldovia and the City of Seward, and appropriating their cash contributions as required match funds for the Safe Streets and Roads for All Grant Project, sponsored by the mayor, hearing on October fourteenth. Ordinance twenty twenty five nineteen thirteen, accepting and appropriating remaining unspent federal pass-through grant funds from the State of Alaska for woody fuel disposal, and authorizing the mayor to enter into a new memorandum of agreement, sponsored by the mayor, hearing on October fourteenth. Ordinance twenty twenty five nineteen fourteen, appropriating U.S. Treasury Local Assistance and Tribal Consistency Funds to support the Central Peninsula Landfill Infrastructure Capital Improvements, sponsored by the mayor, hearing on October fourteenth. Ordinance twenty twenty five twenty-three, amending Borough Code, KPB twenty-two thirty-one ten, regarding assembly compensation to take effect in fiscal year twenty twenty-seven, sponsored by President Ribbons, hearing on October fourteenth. KPB seven one eight zero, approval of precinct boards, canvas board, and absentee voting officials for the October seventh, twenty twenty-five regular municipal election, brought forward by the Borough Clerk. KPB seven one eight one, confirming appointments to the Advisory Planning Commission, Cooper Landing, Philip J. Miller, seat E, Chris DeGeneres, seat B, David W. Nice, seat G, all terms to expire September thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight. Hope Sunrise Advisory Planning Commission, Gregory Sorensen, seat C, term to expire September thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight. KPB seven one eight two, confirming an appointment to the Road Service Area Board, Heidi Covey, at-large seat number one, term to expire September thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight. That is the consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now, there is an opportunity for public testimony on items that are appearing on the consent agenda. Is there anyone who'd like to provide comments on items that are on the consent agenda? Madam Clerk, is there anyone online?
I do not see anyone with their hand raised.
Thank you. In that case, Vice President Cooper?
Thank you, Mr. President. I request unanimous approval to approve the agenda and consent agenda as amended.
Are there any objections to unanimous? Hearing and seeing none. The motion to approve the agenda and consent agenda as amended passes. And racing right along, that brings us to Presentations with Prior Notice, and this evening we have KPB seven one seven nine, Kenai Peninsula Borough School District Quarterly Report, brought to us by Clayton Holland. No, not Clayton Holland, it's Carrie Denderant. Please come to the podium, and you will have ten minutes.
Good evening, President Ribbons, Assemblymembers, and Mayor McChickie. My name is Carrie Denderant, and I'm the Assistant Superintendent for the Kenai Peninsula Borough School District, provided for you tonight. Clayton, in his absence, has asked me to go ahead and provide information in regard to the annual report, and so the report was provided to the clerk, and that has been uploaded. Are you able to bring the report up for me? Oh, I'm looking at you instead of at the report. So, I will go through this fairly quickly, because I have some additional information that I would like to share with you. So, with our annual report, we can go ahead and go to the next page. One piece of it that I do want to remind you is that this is the two thousand twenty-four twenty-five report, so the dates and the information here is based on our last school year. So, of course, for every annual report, we have a message from our superintendent. Next page. We also have a message from our Board President, Zen Kelly. Next page. In addition, we also do have highlighted when our board meeting dates did occur, as well as our quarterly work sessions. Next page. Additionally, we do have all of our school board members who are represented. Just as a reminder, we have three school board seats that are up for election, so two of them are not running again, so we will definitely have two new faces to our board, and would like to thank you on their behalf for all of the support that you've given to our school district. So, Zen Kelly is not running for reelection, nor is Virginia Morgan, and they have been huge in moving our school district forward, so I do want to thank them publicly as well with the assembly. Next page. We do have our five-year strategic plan. That is from two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-seven. The strategic plan was created with about twenty-five stakeholders, and we, we, you know, our, our vision is supporting students in life success, and we're looking at community perseverance, integrity, as well as academic excellence. We do have five priorities: student success, school climate and safety, family and community engagement, workforce development, as well as organizational and resource management. The Kenai Peninsula Borough Board of Education, those are our legislative priorities for the last school year, and we are in the process of updating our legislative priorities for this school year to come in alignment, and working with our legislators for that, the communication piece of it. Next page. We do have forty-two schools in our school district with seventeen diverse communities. It's always fun. We've had several professional development trainers who have come on our camp, come on to our school district, and when I give them examples of how my morning started last Monday, not the one just earlier this week, but we, my husband and I have a cabin out in, at Caribou Lake, so started my morning at four o'clock in the morning, route to on, on our Argo to get me in the hour from the cabin to the Blue Shed parking lot out east, drove from the parking lot an hour and a half drive to be able to get to my house in Cassiloff, to make sure that I was at work by eight o'clock. I was able to come to work, sign some of those things that we have to sign, and then I was off on the road, heading down to Seward for our school board meeting. And so, when people talk about how large our school district is, I didn't go outside of our school district, and we talk about it's the size of Scotland, the size of West Virginia, so people are just fascinated about the, the amount of space that we have in our community. So, we do highlight that we have, we travel three thousand four hundred and fifty-six miles per day with our school buses. So, those are just some little factoids, but we have additional factoids in there for you for staffing ratios, as well as meals served. Next page. We do also like to, in our school report, we like to recognize our extracurricular activities, so we have several state champions. However, we also like to note that several of our schools received also that those academic awards, so we, so when they would be traveling to state competitions for football, basketball, volleyball, those teams are also recognized for their academics. Next page. In regard to awards and recognitions, that these are some of the awards and recognitions that we highlight through the school year. One of the ways that we do highlight our students and staff is through our KPBSD Facebook page, and so we always try to make sure that we identify a variety of different people. So, you can go ahead and peruse staff members, board members, and employees for some of their awards and recognitions, but this is not all-inclusive. Next page. The other piece of it that we've also been highlighting, along with a lot of the support from the Borough Assembly and the mayor, we're very proud of our CTE and middle college program and those statistics, additional Additional department that we like to highlight is our IT department. And as you know, they, we were just visited by SCC Commissioner Testy and with Senator Steven, or not Steven, I'm sorry, Murkowski. And so we are able to highlight some of the great things along with your, with the IT department from the Borough. And then the last page, next page, of course, are those bond projects and those capital improvement projects. And I'm sure that you're receiving several updates through John Hedges, as well as all of the different projects that we are working collaboratively with. If I still do have time, I'm not seeing a timer on here, President Ribbons. There we go. Thank you. It's right there, bright green. A couple other things that I would like to share with you is our current enrollment for the Kenai Peninsula Borough School District. When we are looking at budgeting, we budget based our projected enrollment was eight thousand one hundred forty-five students. We do attend a count. Currently, with a ten-day count, we had eight thousand nine, ninety-eight students. So currently, we are down about forty-seven students. However, we expect for those numbers to increase, but that's just our ten-day count. We will have our official account, which will occur in October. The next thing that I would like to highlight is our AK-Star results. We are very proud of our AK-Star results. When we compare ourselves to the Big Five, which is going to be Anchorage, Fairbanks, Matzoo, Kodiak, and the Kenai Peninsula Borough School District, we did score second in the Big Five for our AK-Star results. However, the one thing that I would like to highlight, but I need to get my glasses so I can see, is when we're looking at the Kenai Peninsula Borough School District, our percentage for advanced proficient did increase by three percent. So in English Language Arts, we are at thirty-seven point three-five percent with an eighty-five participation rate. And we're looking at our math, which also increased by three percent, and that is at thirty-eight point seven-eight with an eighty-four point eight-eight participation rate. Of course, we always try to look at a comparison. So when we're looking at the Matzoo, we were at thirty-seven, they were at forty. Our participation rate was six percentage points higher. And then looking at the mathematics, that, that ours was at thirty-eight point seven, and theirs was at forty. So we are right on the tails of the Matzoo, and we are hopeful with all of the work that we are currently doing with our literacy and math and professional development, that we will be right in line with them. So that is definitely a celebration for the Kenai. We are going to continue focusing on literacy. Melissa Linton and I went to Anchorage on Friday and Saturday. We did receive a six hundred, six hundred thousand dollar grant to support birth through twelve literacy. And so we also received another, in addition to, of a point five ADM, and that's going to provide additional support for pre-K to include a, a structure for Title One Special Education, as well as our Connections pre-K programs, that that will be across the district, and we're looking to expand our pre-K program at other, the sites in our school district. So that's definitely something very exciting for us. So then we're going to continue to bolster our literacy. And then we're continuing to work with CKLA, we're working with our Agri Study, and then Intru Literature, and so we do have coaching that's going out to all of our schools to provide additional professional development for literacy. And the last thing that I do want to share with you is we are focusing this year on PLCs, also known as professional learning communities, and we are working with our administrators to give turnkey opportunities to then provide to their staff. And the purpose of PLCs is to provide data-driven instruction strategies to focus on all areas of need, as well as areas of growth. So with that, I would like to thank you on the behalf of the Kenai Peninsula Borough School District for your continued support for all of our students and our community. And please know that if you have any questions about what is going on in the KPBSD, if you're needing data, please reach out to us. And one of my conversations with one of your fellow Assembly members is, boy, we hear a lot of what's happening on social media, and it's really hard not to respond to some of those different things that are out there, when they're talking about fees, or they're talking about being able to access our schools. So I just want to reiterate that if you ever have questions about the Kenai Peninsula Borough School District, please reach out to us. Thank you.
Thank you for, thank you for your part. We always appreciate it, hearing all the schools are doing. This is arguably the most important item of business that the Borough does. Chairman, Assembly Member Cox.
Yes, I did have a question. You'd earlier talked about middle college, and I know, I believe that was one of the things slated to be eliminated this year. And so I wanted to ask is where, where is our standing on the middle college? Is it active? Are we only doing, at one point, I heard it was just students that were already enrolled in it? Are we including more, or where would that go?
So for the middle college, we still have Annalee Karen, who is the oversight for College and Career. At the last school board meeting, the school board members did accept into the budget to be able to provide additional administrative assistance support. However, we did lose one of our certified staffing. Students that are currently in middle college or still have access to the middle college, and then there was money that is also in addition for students to be able to go into middle college for the beginning of the second semester.
Thank you. Any further Assembly questions? Assembly Member Tunsaf.
Thank you, President Ribbons. I just wanted to say thank you, Carrie, for being here, presenting to us, and also always being available to respond to my questions. I really appreciate it. And just finally, congrats on the AK-Star results. That's just really good news. Thank you.
Any further Assembly questions? Seeing none, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Okay, that moves us on to public comments on items not appearing on the agenda. Are there any public comments, Madam Clerk? Has anyone signed up?
No, sir.
Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak to items, to anything? Madam Clerk, is there anyone on Zoom?
I do have someone, Zen Kelly.
Zen Kelly. Zen Kelly, state your name, your place of residence, and you will have three minutes.
Yeah, thank you, President Ribbons. Well, let me turn around. Assembly Members, Mayor, and President Ribbons, this will be my final update to the Assembly as sitting School Board President. And I just want to start off by thanking Ms. Dendrant for a very comprehensive report. She had a great time, did a great job, and she is always very prompt, timely, and succinct, which I know is appreciated on the Assembly. The updates I have for you is during the school board meeting in Seward, we did have a budget revision where we looked at the additional money brought in from the state with the override of the budgetary veto, and reinstituted basically our coach stipends to a hundred percent, and also brought in the transportation funding reduction that we had for basically sports transportation. So we have a couple other items that we, we supplemented our budget with. And then based on the resolution provided by the Assembly, we also returned funding to keep the Saldovian and Nellcheck pools open one more year with the other pools. I'm hopeful that we can all work together on a solution to find funding for these pools within the district. So I want to thank everybody for their service, for those members that are exiting. We appreciate your service and what you do for our communities, and just thank you very much.
Thank you, President Kelly. Thank you for your service. And I personally really appreciated interacting with you with my last year as the president. You've been able to provide some really useful feedback to me. Is there anyone else who would like to provide any public comment on items not appearing on the agenda? Assembly Member Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to thank Zen Kelly for the excellent leadership he did on the school board, and also for him and the school board supplementing and restoring the funding for Nellcheck and Saldovia pools. So thank you very much. Thank you, Zen.
Okay, last call for public comments at this portion of the agenda. Madam Clerk, anyone? Okay, in that case, Mayor McChickie.
Thank you, Mr. President. Might be a little longer than usual. There's a couple things I want to cover that have been lingering. We continue meeting with the Solid Waste Work Group. We've worked to include the R SAC members. They didn't make it to the last meeting, but we'll keep up that effort. You're seeing a result. Those appropriations tonight are very important for us to move to the next, that were introduced tonight, to the next stage. And I think you'll see some pretty exciting changes here in the near future. Met with, and I think Assembly Member Cox went to the Capehead, Kenai Peninsula Housing Industry Work Session and Roundtable. I think there was three of them. I really appreciate Capehead putting those on. I think I requested that we do a smaller meeting in the near future where we can kind of talk about. There's been some progress, and I think it's been pretty substantial over the last two years. And I'd like to kind of capture that progress a little bit more succinctly, and that's the reason I wanted to have that, that meeting. I want to make sure that people understand that it's a cyclical impact. Typically, the, the market responds this time because of high interest rates and high values. The, the, the industry is very slow to respond. But I want to make sure that we don't get carried away on policy that could have a permanent negative impact on a relatively temporary solution. So let's see, what else? They were removing dead trees down Marydale right by the school, and we held off that project. They didn't, just for a couple days, I didn't feel like we did enough for notifying the mayor, the neighbors, and I think that's pretty important. It's like Assembly Member Cooper brought up tonight, I just really think it's important that people know what's going to happen. And we held off for a couple days, kind of reviewed the whole project, and that is proceeding, which needs to happen. Same day, Robert and I drove up to the airstrip in Sterling, which has had someone kind of living on it for a while, and we had a little meeting with them, and I think they're moving on. I think one vehicle left that day, and they're looking for a place to go. But I, I think they're willing to at least move off of the airstrip, which is a really good thing. That airstrip is a no-man's land, and we'll talk about that in the future because I think we're going to have to take some kind of action. It's actually Borough property, sort of. And it's just through a strange action years and years and years ago, and it takes something like this sometimes to bring it to our attention, but it, it is something we're going to have to take action on. A lot of grants updates with cap meetings coming up, and we'll have that meeting schedule published. I think our first one's Saturday. So we're going to be on the eastern side of the peninsula. I think we're going to cover all of them except for maybe Lowell Point. Because the person who does that was out of town, but we're going to start chatting with communities about what's important to them about the, the projects, and possibly support the clerk a little bit on some projects they want to bring forward for the state capital project in the future. I think you have to keep projects on the forefront because you never know when oil turns around, and they're looking for some to fund. Not proposing any projects is a mistake from my experience in the legislature. Preparing for our secondary online-only land sale, working on a military leave policy review at the groundbreaking ceremony for the DOT. Commissioner Ryan Anderson came down with some DOT folks and WAP, Quality Asphalt Paving, people that were awarded that contract, pretty exciting that that's moving forward. So you'll see some utility work occurring next spring. Some big stuff will start happening, and lighting and great improvements in five lane, like the rest of the spur will finally happen, expecting to be completed by twenty-eight, possibly in twenty-seven, but they don't want to overpromise, so like John Hedges. But it's, it's going well, and then Commissioner Anderson and I did some, toured some other road issues that we just want to keep on the forefront in case we can get some other projects knocked off the list, if you will. Now, I was able to give some welcoming remarks with Assembly Member Eklund at the twenty twenty-five Seward Candidates Forum. We'll talk a little bit more, more about that in a little bit. I was unable to stay. I was in Seward with the Commissioner, I mean, in Homer with the Commissioner, other end of the peninsula. I was unable to stay on for that. But that day, we also cut the ribbon, no, Thursday, nine eleven, we cut the ribbon for the Homer High completion. And that's pretty exciting. The new school entrance is, is really nice. The mayor joined us, and the principal, and the district, and kids were great. They cut it. The president and vice president of the student body, they were very well-spoken. And they were pretty excited. It looks great. That was disintegrating and becoming a risk, and John and his folks did a very good job on that project. It's much appreciated. It's gorgeous. And I'll, I'll touch on school projects now, although I'm going to get back to this list because I wanted to give a little update. Completed projects are the Kenai Field Restroom and Concession, the Seward Track and Field Replacement, the Chapman Pickup, Drop Off, and the Homer High Front Entrance. What's remaining of the Homer High Front Entrance is the students get to design the landscaping, and that'll be installed, installed next spring. So it's pretty exciting. They're excited about that. Just trying to keep them involved in what happens at their school. Working on the Hope School Roof Replacement, Sohigh Siding, that's exciting if you drive by there. The end design is Kenai Middle Safety and Security Renovation, Mountain View Roof Replacement, Nikiski North Star Roof Replacement, and the Saldatna Schools redesign. That Edspec has been approved from the Kenai Peninsula Borough School District, the Board of Education, eight to one. So we will move forward at that process, and you will have a chance to take a peek. And then the design is complete, and the Nikiski Track and Field Replacement. We're going to have to see what money's left when we're all done. We're looking at places to shave a little bit, to hopefully, and when we chose between the two tracks and fields, one of them was missing chunks of pavement, and one of them wasn't. So we moved on to Seward first, but we hope to have enough left at the end of all of this to work on the Nikiski Track and Field as well. Back to this. Let's see, we, I'm really proud of our team, my wife, and Dana and Cassidy for supporting the Lee Shore Center Strike Oppose Event this weekend. It went really well. It was kind of a selfie museum thing, and it was pretty cool. Other than that, I wanted to give a Vaunt Lake update. So I've called back all the folks that sent me an email. They were given some bad information. Here's the bottom line. Kenai Peninsula Borough is in support of that project, but we waited sixty-four years for a piece of property from the feds who own the entire world, and they dropped the ball, and we're not moving forward until they pick it back up. So what I did do is work with the funding agency, a good friend of mine is a person on that agency, and we have gotten the funding continued for another year. And if they can meet their original discussion points about the deal, we'll move forward. And if they don't, we won't. So I have talked to the neighbors. They are in support of the project as well. You know, any of us that own or have owned choice pieces of property on the Kenai are subject to little white bombs that people from somewhere else leave because they don't understand that this is not the middle of nowhere. We actually live here. So we're actually looking at a, beginning an educational thing for visitors that should be ready for next spring called Welcome to the Kenai, Love It Like We Do. So people will treat our natural areas with respect because they don't. Combination of being poorly raised, or just not experiencing the wilderness and thinking that there's a sanitation department that comes up and cleans up after you like they do in Detroit or something. I don't know, but they need to know how to behave in our wild lands, and, and they don't. So looking at options for providing some relief there, but we're not going to give away land back to the feds that it took sixty years to get it from eventually, without them living up to their end of the deal. Let's see, after-action report. I think this is pretty important and pretty impressive. I'm really proud of Nick and the folks with the Flood Control District Service Area on the east side. They had a pretty significant event, three point six-four inches of rain on August twenty-fifth. Add that to four point five-six inches of rain September eighth, heaviest being one point five-nine inches on the tenth, and Quejack Creek was at risk of pushing its, over its banks. Wednesday, it had eroded the berm down to eight feet wide at the top, and And Metco came in with a D eight and kind of saved the day. So. Really proud of that service area. They do great things, you know? These events used to just be over the banks and into the, into the community not very long ago. Flood Control Service Area is working and, and Nick's doing an incredible job, so I'm really proud of them. Last thing I want to touch on, I think. Yes, last thing I want to touch on is I hope new assembly members learn how service areas work. When I gave the little. Positive thank you to people for running for the Seward. Candidate Forum. Apparently I was attacked. For some sort of evil plan I have on the east side. And. I just want to talk a little bit about how service areas work. So in nineteen. Two thousand and seven. The people of Bear Creek. Voted seventy seven to twenty three percent to create. The Bear Creek Fire Service Area. And then they passed a bond proposition. In two thousand. Can't remember. Seven, yes, two thousand and seven election. Those bonds were issued in two thousand and thirteen to fund the, the construction of the. Public Safety Building. That has been on the schedule for payment that you will find in your budget book. That will pay off in two thousand and thirty three. The rest of it is just how we run our service areas to ensure that they're adequately funded for the services they provide in a capital plan. Some of the accusations are fascinating because. I was asked by people on the east side after the Cooper Landing. Thing. To evaluate, just let them know how it works if they were to. Think about consolidation. We had three meetings. We had one in Cooper Landing. We had one. The Seward Public Library, and we had one at the Seward Volunteer Ambulance Corps. The last meeting was in April of twenty four. And when I left that meeting, I said, it's yours now. If you choose to consolidate. Let us know. But we're done. And this has turned into this, this strange conquest thing, which is. Kind of interesting is that that's what I do is sit around at night and think about ways to take over different areas, but. We're done with that. If the community wants to move forward to consolidation, they can contact us. The Bear Creek. Fire Service Area, when Chief Mark Beals was the chief, they purchased an ambulance, and that was in case someone could not get north to respond. That ambulance remains there. It's a two thousand and two version. They have purchased a new ambulance that is available for that same purpose. We appreciate SVAC. There's no effort to displace what they do. We can't. We depend in these tiny communities. We depend on volunteers. To survive. The mill rates would be out of this world. So whomever is the next assembly, please take the time to visit with Brandy so you understand how. Service areas work. Bear Creek has the second highest mill rate because it has a very low tax base. But if you look at the pages in the budget book, this is a, this document is something I really. Recommend that people review. Page one seventy three talks about. The. Service area, page. Three thirty eight talks about the debt that'll be paid off in two thousand and thirty three and those payments. And page. Three fifty eight is their capital plan. You can't just operate an organization without plans for replacement. This is funded adequately, and then when you look at. The two hundred, the page one seventy three information, it gives that band. Of where they should be in fund balance. That fund balance is about survival and operability. It's not about anything else. So. Just interesting stuff that people say when they're running for office and. Whoever that person is. Or those people are, just get to know the facts. It's really important. People can see through that stuff pretty quickly. I really appreciate what SVAC has done for our community through the years. I hope they continue forever. And I hope we continue to work together well to make sure that the people on the east side are safe, just like. The rest of the people in the borough. So that's it for me unless you have any questions.
Assembly Member Cox?
Yes, thanks. I wanted to go back to your, when you were talking about the. The Soldotna School. And how we got the Edspec is approved. And you started to talk about what the next step was, and I guess that's all I was gonna ask is what, what are the next steps? What can the, and it'll probably be the new assembly, but what can the new assembly see? In the near future, what would be happening?
Sure, Mr. Hedges.
You know, Mayor Mchickie, as Mr. Hedges has come up here, I gotta relate a short story from Nikiski. Mr. Hedges and I had the opportunity to. Meet with a few Nikiski constituents on a road project a couple of years or so ago there. And a few of the constituents had a few opinions about where things were going. And one of them came up to me last week and said, you know, I owe you an apology. I really like where my mailbox is now.
Thank you, President. I'm happy that, that he enjoyed where we ended up putting her, or appreciates where we put that, but. To answer the question, we actually talked to the consultants today. We've been negotiating back and forth a little bit on language and schedule. I think we've rested on that. I haven't had a chance to review the document they sent to us, but we were in agreement with what they were going to do, so I'm assuming it's ready to go. And we will begin to move into that contract process. Assembly's already, already approved that consulting firm as the, the most qualified firm in that process of. The original RFP to the Edspec. So we'll send that on to Department of Education Early Development for their blessing and. Get the contract moving forward and start the, the process of design development.
May I ask a follow up?
Go ahead.
So I. I'm hoping I understand correctly. So the next step that would end up coming to the assembly would be to approve. A design is that, I mean, I, I guess I'm asking what would be the next step that the assembly is gonna see in this process?
Yeah, correct. There is a, there's a design that will be approved ultimately by the assembly. And our intent is to do a CMGC type contract, sort of a, a design assist, design build style contract. So that design will be a little bit different than, than say a ninety five percent complete or a hundred percent complete design bid build. But exactly when that will be at that level of completion, we'll have to discuss, and we might do it in a couple of phases to where I may come with. A solution prior, so.
And I don't know if it's too early to ask, but is that something that the assembly might see like by springtime coming? Something to them in a design?
I think well before springtime you'll see that. We're, we're, we're talking about it, you know, shortly after the first of the year, possibly February. We'll get to that sixty five percent complete level. They'll be, they'll be designed, you know, to be a design build project, so there'll be, it'll be a. Design development level, not necessarily a complete design level. It will be approved, but for the intent of approving what we're doing, that should be adequate for the assembly.
Awesome. Thank you.
Assembly Member Johnson?
Thank you, President Ribbons. Thank you, Mr. Hedges. This either be for the mayor or for you. Same question with KMS. Is that included in the same Edspec? Forgive me if I don't remember all of this, if it's included in that same Edspec. But basically the same, same process, you know? Timelines, kind of what should we expect with, with KMS? And then kind of lastly, I guess the question I have, and this is maybe a, a bit of a crystal ball one, but. Is it also going to be at some point during this design process that? We may just discover that. That certain things can't get done, that we don't have the money. I guess what I'm, where I'm going with this is I'm trying to figure out. If there's going to be a need to try to put forward additional bond. Project request, that sort of thing to complete this longstanding project at Keen Eye Middle School that's been. On the top of the list for the state for. Going on thirty years, I think now. It's been a long time. So. You know, just an update kind of on the same process for KMS, and then. If that's included in the same design spec or if that's something kind of completely different, but.
So KMS is a renovation of an existing school, doesn't require an educational specification. The design's complete for Keen Eye Middle School. We. Were evaluating whether or not we could phase the work in a way to do it during school, while school was in operations, and it's just too intrusive. Had we gotten done with the design a little bit earlier, but there was some complications and we didn't, we didn't make the deadline to start work before school. Had we done that, we thought we could get certain things in place to allow that to happen. Once we lost that, that time. We've set that project back till next spring, so we're gonna bid it sometime after the first of the year, kind of prime time bidding season. And give the contractor permission to start work as soon as school lets out.
Awesome. Thank you. I know we had talked about some of this. I appreciate you putting it on the record. Thanks, John. Mayor Mchickie?
Yeah, I just wanted to touch that we haven't, also haven't exhausted efforts to get the state to. Think about. When we have necessary repairs like this, they should continue their investment. We need our legislators to stand up for. Capital. Cost. Credits. We need them to stand up for. Bond debt reimbursement. We, when, so like, when I talked about getting those capital projects in and on the record. The bottom line is, the year that I left, we were able to return all of that. Bond debt reimbursement and kind of one fell swoop that was missing because. Oil prices were doing real well, and we had done fairly well on the budget and things like that. So. Oil goes up and down. The state has traditionally helped cover a lot, healthy proportion of those costs. And if they can cover some of those costs, it might leave us enough to. Even if we are short, complete those projects satisfactorily to. The principals and students and families of those different schools. So we're not giving up on that. We're gonna do our best to. Do each project the best we can at lowest cost possible, and. Hopefully, we have enough left that even if it is phased, at least we're. We're demonstrating improvements that are real life improvements for those schools with a. Forward plan for getting it covered in the near future.
Any more questions for the mayor? Okay, seeing none. That moves us on to public hearings on ordinances of which we have two. One regarding decertification and the other regarding anadromous waters, but we're gonna take a five minute break before we do that. Okay. We are now in public hearings on ordinances. Ordinance twenty twenty five dash eighteen amending Borough Code KPB fourteen point zero six two forty and KPB fourteen zero six. Two fifty regarding decertification. This came to the Policies and Procedures Committee. It was brought to us by the mayor. Chair Cox?
Thank you. I move to enact ordinance twenty twenty five dash one eight amending Borough Code KPB. One four point zero six point two four zero and KPB one four point zero six point two five zero regarding decertification. And my committee report is we discussed a little bit more about this today. There are a few questions to ask and. So what this gets to the bottom of is what it's doing is it is a. It's cleaning up our code and it's changing who, instead of the assembly making the decision, this would be the board making the decision. And it also, the, so the Road Service Area Board. And so it also will change to where it is, instead of only one dwelling, it could be up to one, one to five dwellings that could. Then allow for that decertification of the road. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Cox. That brings us to public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to provide testimony on this ordinance? Is there anyone in the room? Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up or on the internet?
I do not have anyone signed up, nor do I see any hands raised.
Thank you. That brings us back to assembly discussion. Is there any assembly discussion? Chair Cox?
Can I ask for unanimous?
Unanimous has been requested. Are there any objections? Vice President Cooper?
I do have an amendment.
Okay, proceed with your amendment.
All right, I move to amend section two subsection KPB one four point oh six point two four O B two to read as follows. And. The first part is the procedure. On two, it says notice and hearing. And the part that I am asking to be changed is where it says a notice of the decertification hearing. Shall, will be crossed out and insert will be posted for a four week period prior to the date of the first hearing at the beginning and ending points of the. Of the road proposed for decertification. And then inserting if at the determination of the Road Service Area Director. Or designate the beginning and ending points of the road proposed for decertification are both accessible and safe, and I would ask be unanimous.
Unanimous has been requested. Is there any objection? Hearing and seeing none, the amendment passes.
Do we have to do unanimous on amended?
Go ahead, Chair Cox?
Yes, I'll ask for unanimous as amended.
Unanimous has been requested as amended. Vice President Cooper?
I don't have a darn thing.
Oh, you got your, you got your light on. Okay, so. My apologies for the confusion on that one. So we have passed the amendment and we have a request for unanimous on the ordinance as amended. Are there any objections? Hearing and seeing none, the ordinance passes as amended. That brings us on to ordinance twenty twenty, twenty twenty five dash twenty. This one also belongs to Policies and Procedures Committee, brought to us by the mayor and Assembly Member Johnson. This one addresses adoptions and deletions of anadromous waters within the west district of the peninsula. Chair Cox?
Yes, thank you. I move to enact ordinance twenty twenty five dash two zero amending KPB two one. Point one eight point zero two five to address adoption and deletions of adronomous waters within the west district of the KPB twenty one point eighteen appendix. And my report is that. We talked a little bit more about it today. I will go over a little bit from our last meeting too, is this was brought, this was a study. The information's coming from a study done by the Black Scott Department of Fish and Game. There will be. Hundred and two. Ex, extra branches and streams addressed and nineteen, it says nineteen streams and then twenty four lakes. And these are things that will be added to that. And then there also are some deletions as well that were put in there as suggestions. And that's seen in my report.
Thank you, Chair Cox. Is there any public comments on this ordinance? Please come to the podium, state your name and your place of residence, and you have three minutes.
Joan Cor, Califansky area. I just have a comment to make for. Friend of mine who isn't here, who bought property on a lake. Two or three decades ago, and her comment was they take our land and we pay taxes on it. So she fought this thing years ago, but was not successful. So just that comment from her.
Thank you for your testimony. Is there anyone else in the public who would like to comment on this ordinance? Madam Clerk?
I do not see anyone.
Okay. That brings us back to the assembly for assembly discussion. Is there any assembly discussion? Chair Cox?
First off, I was gonna say with one of the comments is I don't believe that it actually, I don't believe this takes away anyone's land in any, any way, shape or form. It's just, it's just identifying lakes and streams. That we need to look at and do special things around. So there are, will be requirements around those. But I do not believe it takes anyone's land away. And then. With that, I'll ask for unanimous unless somebody has a comment.
Unanimous has been requested. Is there any objection? Hearing and seeing none, ordinance twenty twenty five dash twenty passes. And we don't have any unfinished, unfinished business. We don't have any new business, so this brings us back to. Our final public comment session. Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak on any item? Madam Clerk?
I do not see any hands raised.
Okay, we will close public comment and move on to assembly comments. Assembly Member Johnson, let's start with you.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. I want to again extend my thank you to the school board. I'm very happy that they have funded the Nanilchik and Salovia Pools for. An additional year. I think that's gonna be a real boon for the people in those communities. I got a couple of announcements. One is that coming up this. I got a couple of announcements. One is that coming up this Thursday, September eighteen, there will be a meeting for the Kasilov Cemetery that's uh, known as Spruiskov Memorial Park. And that will be at the Kasilov Fire Station at six P M. And then finally, Saturday, October four, the Kenai Peninsula Historical Association will be holding a meeting in the Fish and Wildlife Service Building on Ski Hill Road. And uh, that I will have um, myself as the featured speaker, talking about the history of education on the Kenai Peninsula. And with that, Mr. President, thank you.
Assemblymember Johnson.
Thank you, President Ribbons. Um, thank you, everybody here attending tonight. Um, just wanted to um, thank a couple of people. I'll keep it real quick. Um, thank the mayor and his staff um, for everything they've been working on related to all the school bond projects. I know it's not, not been an easy project. Really appreciate you guys' leadership on that. Um, and then also to all of your staff and admin staff, Ms. Wilcox, um, Mr. Kelly, Ms. Harbaugh, everybody that worked on the the tax exemptionary right there. There's a lot of work put into that. So really appreciate that. And then just finally, our fantastic staff here in the clerk's office, really appreciate all you guys have done. And then I'll just, um, you know, we've said this word like six or twenty different times tonight, and it got me thinking, you know, if if I would have had Latin, like my kids had Latin, like this is how I learned this, I probably would have known this, but I learned it from my kids. So um, anadromous is really just two Greek words, ana andromus. Ana is up andromus is running. So when you think of that word, really just think about things that would run upstream and then you found it. But uh, anyways, with that, I'll uh, it's our word of the day. That's all I have. Thank you.
Assemblymember Cox.
Thank you. Um, I was just going to mention, as the mayor had said earlier, I did attend the Capehead Housing Roundtable. Um, it was very informative. It was an interesting a group of folks. Um, they had an economist that I think has spoken here before. But he talked a bit about where our housing is and what it's looking like. Um, and then there was also a survey of the people that came, and I think there was about fifty people, about half of them had taken the survey. And it was pretty interesting to see what the survey was about because some of the things I think were based on people's feelings. I think some of the items were based on observations and were very true. Um, but that's coming from me who maybe I'm observing it as a feeling as well. I'm not sure. I mean, because we were all just seeing what what we saw in our own lives and and our perspectives of it. But I will say is, is I agree one hundred percent with what the mayor is saying is I think that sometimes we want to take some extreme measures when there, when we don't want to do things that will have a lasting effect, that's not the effect that we're really looking for. And so we have to be very careful on on uh, if we take it to an extreme to that measure. Because we talked a lot about um, what kind of housing. And of course, everybody kind of agreed that uh, what I noticed was is that one of the things that I noticed being that I work in that field as well is that we talked about like that some people were saying that apartments and what came up on one of those surveys was that apartments are what people needed. And I, what my question was is we need to start looking at what size because as somebody in that field, I'm finding that it's three bedrooms is what people are looking for. Is your two bedrooms that we have a ton of two bedrooms around? Um, in the eighties, when they built all our fourplexes and things around, at least the central part, that's what they built, were two bedroom units. And so I do think we have a lack of some three bedroom units. And when we talk affordable, that's the size that we're looking at because as soon as you go to a house, it becomes a lot less affordable for folks. And so I do think that's probably somewhere to look, but that again is just my opinion after being um, at that round table. It was very interesting. I hope that the mayor does bring something forward later with the group to try and uh, get some of that going. Because I do think it has to be looked at as where are we headed with those kinds of things? And I, you didn't mention it tonight, but you had mentioned it in the meeting before, is that one thing people have to recognize is there are a lot of projects started. They're just not complete yet. And so if we keep doing that, sometimes you'll overdo it. And then then you get in the opposite situation is where you have all this housing that nobody's utilizing. And that can be just as much of a bad problem as not having enough housing. Anyways, with that, um, it is homecoming week for Soldatna, so go Stars. Um, they have activities almost every night. If you go on their Facebook or Instagram page, they're having all kinds of activities in the evening. I'm missing one right now. Um, so anyways, they will have their bonfire, I believe, on Thursday. And so that's something you can attend if you so choose. Thank you.
Assemblymember Eklund.
Thank you, President Ribbons. Um, had a busy week last week. On uh, Sunday, the seventh, I attended the Cooper Landing Soup Supper. Over thirty soups. Wow. I mean, the place was packed. I did not try them all, but I had my share. Um, on the eighth, I attended the Kenai Peninsula School District Board Meeting, and I thanked them for um, agreeing to our request to fund the Soldovia and Nanilchik Pools for another year. On the night of the tenth, as the mayor mentioned, um, I welcomed the candidates for the Seward area at the um, Ray Building in Seward. And on Friday and Saturday, I attended uh, Seward Volleyball Games at Anchorage and the Seward varsity girls won both days. Uh, regarding a question I asked earlier about the twelve million dollar U S Treasury Local Assistance and Tribal Consistency Fund. Um, what what we'd spent things um, from that so far, and I remembered that we had spent some others for the solid waste. Uh, we approved four million earlier, and now we will be voting on another one point seven for the solid waste. Um, so I really want to just encourage people to rethink, reuse, recycle, renew because it's not go, I mean, the 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 cost is going to just keep expanding if we don't start doing something about what we're throwing away. Thank you.
Solid waste is a significant expense for the borough. Vice President Cooper.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I'd really like to thank all of the departments that worked on the uh, pending legislation, uh, changing that or adding a chapter for personal property versus real property. They've been working on that for years. And and it's just a huge effort from multiple departments. So thank you to all of you that have been working on that and the entertaining thing for me today. Um, as we sat here and we were going through all this code and we're kind of looking at that analysis and thinking it's dry. Our borough attorney um, got excited and had a favorite part of all of that. So just know he's passionate about what he's doing and I'm really grateful for the entire staff on that. And I'd also like to thank all of the candidates that are running for election. We won't meet again now until after the election. Thank you, each and every one of you for deciding to run, for being here to learn about what we have coming up and um, for being willing to give your time. So thank you all, and I wish you all well in the election. Uh, we do have several propositions on the ballot. Um, those, uh, the information on those propositions are on the borough website. We don't mail those out now, but if you'd like one mailed to you, um, you can contact the clerk's office and they'll get one mailed to you, but they are out there. And please make sure that you're reading those so you understand what you're voting on. And have a good evening.
Thank you, Vice President. Mayor Michiky.
Yes, thank you. I really appreciate the questions on the bond projects. Um, I know a couple of you are still wondering like where you fall in the order. Um, when you're twelve fifteen million dollar short, you do the best you can. A lot of factors uh, cause the shortages, and I'm never going to point fingers at anyone, but I got, it was Hannah Duss. And uh, we have a great team. They're doing amazing things to get, try to satisfy the intent uh, the best we can. We've got some work to do. Other thing I want to mention is um, I'm perfectly okay with everyone not liking me. I'm okay with that. I'm going to do the right thing. And I'm going to learn every detail about every decision I make before I make it, and it's going to be the correct information. We have to lead. We have to bring along our constituency with us. But if we follow Facebook and that's the direction we go, we're going to do a disservice to the sixty two thousand people we represent. So it's okay. Few people think I have an evil plan. I guess, I guess that's enough for tonight, but I really want to thank you for the questions. I um, appreciate you keeping the pressure on me helps me keep the pressure on others and uh, I don't know if I agree with John's schedule on Soldatna schools, but we fight about that often. So, well, we respectfully discuss that often. So anyway, thank you. Good night.
Thank you, Mayor Michiky. Not much for me today. Uh, for those in Nikiski who are concerned about the post office, I wish I had good news, but I don't. Um, I think we're going on now four weeks of Nikiski not having postal service, and that's just unacceptable. The only comments I've gotten from the postal service is that there's a contract and it's it's expensive and they don't have people, and that's just not acceptable. So I just want people in Nikiski to know that I and the mayor and various other elected officials are putting what pressure we can bear on it. Um, Nikiski deserves better than that. And with that, our next assembly meeting will be October fourteen, twenty twenty five at six P M here in the Betty J Glick Assembly Chambers, the Borough Administration Building. Participation is available through Zoom, and with that, we are adjourned.